I call the City Council to meet other whole meeting to order Monday, February the 10th, 2020 approximately 5:03 PM. The first thing is on our agenda is Amoroc Building Reuse Project. So we're going to add Natasha Hampton.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Ten members of Council, Natasha Hampton Assistant City Manager. This item before you this evening is the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program, specifically the application for support of the Amoroc Building Reuse Project. Just a little bit about Amoroc, they are the world's largest producer of corrosion-proof polymer concrete structures. The polymer concrete structures replaces lime-type semens as a binder, and they're often used for sewer structures, swimming pools, and drainage channels. Currently, Amoroc produces, the products that they're producing are currently sold in North Carolina, Georgia, South Carolina, Virginia, and Florida, and they're manufactured currently out of Sulfur Springs, Texas, and they're shipped from there. So, Amoroc recognized the need to have an East Coast-based operations, and thus they chose the city of Rocky Mount and the limits to purchase a building at 133 Blue Hawaiian Drive. This is an aerial of the building here on north, between Northwestly and in Fort Park So in this facility, they are looking to do building modifications that are needed to supply sufficient workspace. They're looking to also modify and improve gateways, structures there, as well as electrical improvements. The anticipated cost for these modifications and improvements will be a $2.3 million investment, and approximately 41 new full-time positions are expected according to the grant application. There is a match requirement if the council so chooses to support this application. The grant is 5% of the total grant amount. The grant amount is $300,000, so that equates to $15,000. But that's a cost-share match that will be shared between the Carolina Gateway Partnership and the city of Rocky Mount. And in this case, the grant match for the city is $7,500. And funding has been identified and is made available utilizing the Economic Development Account and the numbers listed here. What is being asked from the council this evening is for council to provide the city manager with authorization to place this item on the February 24th council agenda, for council to approve the, thank you, for council to approve the resolution on the 24th, and also to authorize city manager to execute the grant agreement, once those agreements have been received. So tonight is just for your information, but the item will come back forth for the council to authorize your support of this application.
Are there any questions, uh, council members?
The 41 jobs, you know, at the bottom, it talks about the five criteria that has to be met. If they're not met, the city's ultimately responsible, or we're going to then pass that along to the company. So if they don't get the 41 jobs, it's provided, we come back to the city, but we're going to pass that along to the company.
Yeah, see, there is a deed, a trust that the city takes out on the account holder in order to ensure the funds for what the city puts in as a required match.
And then on my follow-up, previous on some of the other grants with the frozen food and then Babbington, I noticed that the mayor was signing. Why, is there a reason for changing it to city manager's sign?
It's either, it was the council's pleasure for the mayor to sign previously, and so the, in order to ensure that the applications are timely and executed timely, we ask that the council consider the city manager, however, the council, it's been at the council's pleasure previously.
Is it either or?
Yeah.
I'm thinking those other grants require the highest elected official to sign.
The last one the manager was allowed to sign.
I don't know. I don't know the magic, but sometimes I'm authorized to do that by the grant application. Sometimes it's.
The last grant I've seen, we've had sort of highest, signed by the highest elected official.
Yeah, but I have executed it. Since I've been here, it fluctuates. It just depends on the grant, the application, and what the grant requires. I don't seek to execute these things unless it's specified as a city manager.
Okay, well, it's the same range as the previous city, right? What is it?
No, what I'm saying is oftentimes, sometimes it's be, it depends on the grant, sometimes it's the manager. So whatever the grant is requiring, that's what we do.
And it's the grant requiring the city manager, is that correct?
Well, I guess, that's what she said.
Either or.
Any other questions? Staff would like to add any additional information?
No, sir, other than as Assistant City Manager stated, we will, with your consent, place this on the February 24th agenda, will formal approve.
We always have to see the economic development, more jobs here in the city, and so we're going to receive this as information, and it'll be placed on the, to the council, then on the January 4th.
Yes, sir.
We receive, hopefully, from the city. Item number two, the second quarter fiscal year 2020 report of revenues and expenditures. Kenneth Hunter.
Thank you very good, thank you very much, and good afternoon, everyone. This is kind of, kind of unique in the fact that we just presented the first quarter report last month, and we're already in a position to be able to present the second quarter report. So we will take a chance to take a look at where we are with respect to revenues and expenditures. The good news is the trends that we saw in December are continuing for, that we saw at the end of the first quarter continuing in the second quarter. We'll also take a look at the monthly employment update through the month of middle of the book. There were two items that council during our last meeting last month had asked about, which was some zip code employment analysis, as well as wages by employment sector here locally, and we also wanted to share that information with you as well. In terms of where we are for the second quarter, we continue to see strong growth with our head of the LORAM rate and revenues, as well as our sales tax revenues. Overall, our revenue picture is very good with respect to the general fund, and the activity, again, we want to say that this year, we also are tracking the activities of the event center with respect to revenues and expenditures. Overall, our expenditures are less than they were last year at the end of January compared to January of 20, of fiscal year 2019, and that's in a couple of different areas. And at this point, based on what we're seeing, we are not anticipating needing to use the $1.5 million in appropriated fund balance in order to balance this year's budget. So that money should be able to be returned to fund balance instead of being, being used as appropriated in the budget. We appear to be on the track for that. With respect to our utilities, which constitute about 70% of our total budget on electric and gas side, the good news on electric side is that sales have been consistent with respect to electrical usage. We actually have seen some growth in electric usage, and we can tie it up to some increased industrial activity, as well as increased residential activity, additional residents moving into the area. We also have noticed a little bit of a lag in gas, and of course, that is due to weather. Gas is a weather-dependent utility, primarily because it is used for heating. The good news with respect to gas side is that even though we've seen that lag in gas sales, we also seen a lag in gas purchases. And generally speaking, gas has been very cheap, so overall, we've been able to maintain our operating margins in both utilities. That's, that's the, that's the good sign, even though, and that's because of the way the rate structure is designed, and expenditures are on target in both funds. On the water and sewer side, this year, we are seeing that water sales have picked up a little bit, and we shouldn't meet our targeted revenue projections with water for the current fiscal year. On the other hand, sewer sales have been down, and that's predominantly due to the dry weather. Now, that will, of course, may change a little bit with what's happened here very recently, but we have not had the same sales to our wholesale customers due to influent infiltration in other systems that typically end up being charged as a, and is it being revenue for us, of course, we also have to treat it. And so even though revenues are down, treatment costs are also down, both in the sewer area. And we, of course, did anticipate significant capital activity on the expense side, but as you saw during the financials presentation a couple of months ago, our financials are in good shape. We anticipated these capital expenses that we are going to be paying this current fiscal year, and so we are in good shape both in the water and sewer fund. We are also in good shape in the stormwater fund this year. Talk a little bit with respect to employment. We have had three consistent, as of, as of the end of September, I'm sorry, the end of November, we'd had in the city three consistent months of growth in employment. That's represented in the bars in yellow compared to bars in blue, which is labor force. Labor force has also grown, and that's kind of kept employment rates, the unemployment rate consistent because there's been growth in both areas. The same is also true for the metropolitan area. I know the December numbers came out last week for our local area, I haven't had a chance to necessarily look at those, but generally speaking, trends remain optimistic here locally. With respect to that, what we can say is that as of November, if you looked at year-to-date change for our metropolitan area compared to other metropolitan areas, we'd be around the middle at about 2.4% growth in our metropolitan area in employment as of year-to-date in November. So we've had a good year overall for employment in the Rocky Mount metropolitan area for this current year, I mean, for 2019, and we'll have to continue that in 2020. Now, we'll talk a little bit also about the non-farm employment. This just kind of gives you an idea of the distribution of employment across the metropolitan area. We only have this information on metro basis, we don't have this information available at the city, but at the city level. As you can see, in terms of non-farm employment, we have just over 57,000 jobs, a significant share, more than 80% are in government, or sorry, in the private sector, and about nearly about 44,500 are in the service industry, about 12,700 in goods production, of which 10,100 are in manufacturing. So our manufacturing count is significant. It was really interesting to learn Thursday during the chamber annual meeting about how, with example, Cummins, Cummins facility, I think represented 5% of their total global sales, if I was correct, about 5% of Cummins' total sales comes from their production here in the Rocky Mount area, which is significant for a global company the size and scale Cummins' is operating. Talk about employment data by zip code. There are four zip codes that are located within the city of Rocky Mount, or they're significant parts of the city of Rocky Mount. 27801 and 27803 are towards the east and central, 27804 is towards the west, and 27809 is towards the north of the Battleboro area. So that, just to kind of give you a frame of reference to where they are. These are their respective populations of worker age population, i.e. those that are between the ages of 20 and 64, and that's kind of how the census, when they're doing their annual updates to the American Community Survey, kind of sets the group that they consider as, as really targeted for the rate, labor, labor analysis. As you can see, participation rates do vary. Overall, for the city, we're around 75%. Some have higher participation rates, others a little lower. With respect to employment to population ratio within these census, within these zip codes, we're around 69%. The unemployment rate overall, and this is as of the end of 2018, so it is a little dated, at that time was around 7.9%, and you can see particularly to the north and to the east that we do have above-average unemployment compared to where we are in the center and west. And the same is also true with respect to male and female. It was really interesting, and it's also important to note as well, that male unemployment is higher than female unemployment here in the Rocky Mount area.
Hold on.
Yes.
I'm just trying on the unemployment rate, I notice on zip code, but as you mentioned earlier, the state came out with their stuff last week, which I think we're at 4.3, says that is for the MSA, says is that, that big the difference between our zip codes and the MSA?
Well, the difference is, is that that, that, the challenge with looking at the unemployment rate is that the unemployment rate's done by month based on their surveys. These are based on a different survey that's done by the Census Bureau, so they may be calculating different groups. So the one thing I would probably say, I mean, this is a, maybe a good overall indicator of long-term employment or long-term unemployment. It is not as much an indication of where unemployment is at this moment. That would be the survey that would come out from the Bureau of Labor Statistics that came down last week.
So we're better than, that's what I'm getting to, hopefully, we're better off in what's impacted.
The goal would be, yes, that we're better. This is, what this does is it gives us an idea of differentiation between areas. There is information here because it does show variances between, between particular locations, right?
So I see the source says 2014 to 2018.
Yes.
Can I assume the last reported period is either late 2017 or sometime in 2018?
Right. The way, the way the American Community Survey works is it kind of does like five-year estimates of a five-year grouping, and it updates that, updates that annually. Like the last group was 2013, 2017, this is 2014 to 2018.
So is this average over a five-year period?
Close to an average over a five-year period.
Can you also obtain the education levels or achievement that would correlate with these different groups?
We can, yes. I think we have that information. I don't have it off the top of my mind.
Oh, no, I wouldn't expect it to.
And the other thing we can look at is we ask for, what is the differentiation in the services that each one of these areas have gotten, around homeownership and equity and access? You know, that we, we want to look at that, those, those areas, that sometimes those numbers could represent not having access, not having equity, and, and, you know, you get those numbers. So we were trying to look at, you know, we know those numbers will come out like that. We want to be clear why those numbers are out there, what's driving.
We can, we can definitely do some work to look into other demographic factors with respect to that. The other thing that I will note as well is that zip code lines do not necessarily match up to municipal lines. That's another factor to consider. So there is some unincorporated territory included in these tracks as well.
So if we're understanding you correctly, Councilman John, what, what the councilman, I think, is asking for other factors via the zip code, for homeownership.
Homeownership.
Educational attainment, those other variables that might be in that community service.
And access to service, you know, when they talk about service, access to, to wealth building, access to, to services from both state or federal, you know, grocery stores, different things that, that those communities don't have.
Yeah, well, you're ultimately looking for, what is it that's causing this, and how can we improve a lot of those in this position, right? That's really what we want. Is anything close that category?
Right, so we keep apples to apples. We probably need to look at what that survey is reporting back.
Right, of course.
Yep.
And that was my, I want to still go back to what Councilman Roger was saying too. How do we align the data so that you really are looking in the same time periods, so that we don't have skewed perspective unless there's some variance that can be applied with generic?
I'll have, I'll have to look at it. The challenge is, is that really the, is that data, is that the only data really that's collected at the local level that's tracked on a more current basis that's not, you know, built in a survey model or anything like that, is the unemployment data, and that's because the employment-unemployment data is because the Bureau of Labor Statistics does two different surveys, and they do it on a local basis. And so we'll have to work with that to see, because the challenge is, is that a lot of other data sets, like the ones that we use to collect this information, which provides us a broader understanding of employment by zip code, or allows us to look at other, other elements of employment, is, is not updated on a frequent basis.
So with, if we're looking at perhaps creating a, a broader lens to help us understand who we are, we might want to consider broadening our perspective about how to evaluate, and there might be other data pools and other evaluation methods or methodologies, you know, that perhaps traditional economic development professionals might not currently employ. So I think the questions that Councilman John is, are asking, I don't see it being easy to do, you know, but, you know, you got to bring in, if you're talking about social determinants of health, that's a very wide range of factors and variables in different areas that measure data in different manners, which might not be easy for economists to necessarily do, but if we want to look at a broader picture, that's probably working, that's not an easy task, but if we do it, we might be leading the pack.
And I would propose that, you know, we don't have to overcomplicate it either. Let's find the low-hanging fruit.
Right.
And simply move the needle in the right directions.
Right, right. Because there are, there are lots of folks who are doing that, it's just that they're not put together so you can see it side by side with side, but, you know, it should not be impossible.
True. We can, we can certainly look and see what, what is out there and figure out, figure out a way to gather as much information as possible.
This may be really considered farcical, but when my grandchildren were born, I was happening to be in the delivery room, and when the nurse was asking the mother of the child, well, the paperwork, she asked for the educational attainment of the mother. They didn't ask for the educational attainment of the father. So apparently, there's considered that much difference in significance effect on the child in terms of educational attainment of the mother that may not be true with the father, but in, in terms of influence in the child and the life that that child would be brought up. We don't capture anything like that in here, but it's considered enough that when they do the information to the birth certificates, they do ask that.
Well, actually, the information that you provided had the education attainment, because I, the geek that I am, I put it in a spreadsheet, and I've got some of that compared right now with, along with the disability and poverty that he provided.
The attainment of each child, the mother of each child, that's one.
Well, not the mother, but this is.
Yeah, but that's, that's the point, there's the influence on the child of their educational attainment with the mother prior to that child's coming into the world.
So what clear direction we want to do, Mr. Hunter, to work on, bringing up the type of information that we want, social economics opposed to.
Well, I dare say some people have done this before, like, what does the UNC, not school, but the, the demographic, what have they done, or what do they have that we could just pull home and not put you to work?
My experience with theirs, and there is some information, so I can definitely take a look, they're, they look at things a lot of times on a county basis. Typically, what I've seen their reporting is done is on a county basis, and we're kind of going to a lower level than that. I'm not saying that that's the only thing that they do, but what I have typically seen is that UNC Demographics Project does a lot of looking at kind of holistic statewide issues, and they kind of get to, get to, get to that county level, and they kind of compare like what one county is to another. There are some groups out there that have started to really look at information, and the way they look at it is on a census tract basis, which is a little smaller than a zip code. And because tip, because what's happened is, is that with this 2014-2018 ACS survey, the Census Bureau actually made it to where they provided more of that detailed information available on a census tract basis. They had kind of not been as good with that in the past. And of course, census tracts were also used for some other projects that they've looked at, like opportunity zones gathering. Well, so they're also doing annual updates. So that, that's the key thing, is it used to be only 10-year measurements. It used to only be 10-year measurements, and now they're doing more annual updates. So there is information out there, and we can definitely, we can go as far into it as as, as possible to definitely show what's available.
So, once we get this information, then what we're going to do with it, and what I'm saying to this, to the council, because what we ask you to do and to bring back with us is to show, as Councilman John just stated, Blackwell, that those are in those zip codes for certain sectors in our community that are, have lack of access to services, housing, so forth and so on, education. So that, that means that those are the areas that we're going to hopefully target or will put investment in those communities. It's good to get the data, but once you get the data, what you're going to do with it? So, you understand what you're asking me to do?
I did, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The next piece of information we wanted to provide was kind of giving you an idea of local average wages by sector. And this takes a little bit of effort because what we want to do is try to control for irregularities due to hours of work. So what we've done is we've based it on the most current information available, and annualized it as of the second quarter of 2019. These quarterly censuses of employment and wages typically run about six months behind. So we only have through the second quarter of 2019, and then we kind of looked back at the three previous quarters and kind of developed an annualized, an annualized level so that we could better understand it. And what we did find, these are the wages, the overall workforce average for our metropolitan, this is for the metropolitan area, is about $19.28 an hour. As you can see, there are several jurisdictions, there are several industries that, that pay above that in terms of hourly wages, there are a couple that don't. So this is an overall perspective of, of where these wages are with respect to sector here in the Rocky Mount metropolitan area.
Any question?
Do we have any comparative data? Do these, do our wages track consistently with other regions or areas?
In some areas, they do. What I would need to, but that's easy to obtain, is to pull the information for the other MSAs and do that. We can do that statewide, we can do that with us in neighboring states, probably within the state and within the neighboring would be the way to go with that.
I know we've been asked to look at livable wage opposed to the current wages that we are paying our employees, and I know that's going to take money to get us to where we need to be.
Well, I would, would also just remind the council that we do have a pay study underway, but we have done some preliminary work in living wage, I think it's at $16, I don't know.
Correct, well, 15, it was, I think, $16.
$16 an hour is what we looked at, but of course, that was just the budget impact and the cost of raising wages to that. That did not address the compression that that would cause. So it's not a pool cost just yet, but we do know what that cost would look like. So what we're doing basically is just waiting until our pay survey information comes back to us, of which, of course, will be shared with the council, because you're going to have to give some direction about, you know, what is your pay philosophy for the employee group? Do we want to be at market? Do we want to be slightly above the market, et cetera? So it is basically unstudied, and we've done some preliminary work to know exactly what just $16 an hour would be.
What is it currently?
The current is about, what, 13?
Yeah, the current base is in the range, the lowest, the lowest for the range is 13.
So in terms, if we even look at 16, that, I think you, I want to mention a figure.
Yeah, it's about, just to, you know, raise those individuals to $16, and again, that doesn't take into any compression adjustments above that would have to be made. But that cost, I think, came in around $73,000 to do that.
$73,000?
Yes, sir. We hope to have some information in time for the budget preparation, so we're thinking around March or April, just in time for us to include it as a recommended budget for next year.
We have that, perhaps, before this, if you're treating?
I don't think so. I don't. It might be necessary to really just devote a committee of the whole meeting just to the results and the recommendations that come back from that study. Keep in mind that that is a study of all positions across the city.
The, the living wage, is, is that included benefits or not?
I don't think we took. I don't think we took into consideration the benefits, that's just salary. So if you add another thirty-five percent to that number, then that would get you pretty close to the full impact.
Another thirty percent?
Thirty-five. That's generally the number that we use.
Yeah.
A little, we have some other employers to look at, and also we can look at that as well, is looking at those wages by zip code as well. You know, trying to get around to what has, if livable wages in those zip codes could explain too why we're getting some of the outcomes we're getting. So we've been trying to track those wages across and forth in our area.
On my slide, again, we continue to be optimistic about the growth that we see. Uh, we do, of course, remain aware that there is always potential for headwinds. We know that there's been some concern that's been raised with respect to the coronavirus situation in China and other concerns. Uh, but we do see visible growth and development, particularly here in Rocky Mountain area. We definitely see that from an industrial perspective, a commercial perspective, and a residential perspective. The good news, because we are now through the second quarter, is we are in a position that we can start projecting where we're gonna be at the end of the year as well, starting with projecting for fiscal twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And of course, that's key to our development of the budget and the prepared preparation of the CIP. So we certainly got a lot of information to share with you, along with the information that you've requested tonight. We also have, of course, the ongoing financial updates and information to help build our forecast to where we will, we can be certain about where we will be going into the next fiscal year.
No other question? Thank you. Our next item is Alexander Evans, the operation complex dedication, Mr. Carr.
So while Ken's bringing that up, what we have for you is just to follow up on the direction we had from, I think, the December meeting, with Mr. Buckford, with an interest in dedicating the Albemarle Avenue Operations Complex to the Alexander Evans Operations Complex. So took a look at that, worked up a couple of things. One, what you see right here is a memorial plaque, based on the other ones that we have around the city. This one would actually be placed inside the Environmental Services, we recommend it place this inside the Environmental Services Complex over on Fourth Road. Simply if that's inside that before you, that's where the sanitation workers now operate, uh, so people could come in and see that.
Have you, well typically, they, they are inside, but have we ever seen, well, I know we have seen.
Turnage, uh, the one for this building is inside in the lobby.
Miss Yates, it's inside the lobby too, right?
Yeah, this is just the brass membered plaque, the actual dedication for the, so you got the next.
Wait a minute, we got business talking on this.
I didn't know in terms, it's a, it's a city building that, uh, opposed to the train station is open to the public twenty-four seven. And this would be, if someone wanted to read it, uh, knowing that it's very important to the history of Rocky Mountain, that it wouldn't have access to actually be to go inside to read it. So I didn't know if we could be exited or placed on the outside opposed to inside.
We can, we can do that. Um, but what I would say is what we were envisioning it is in the best boat we've ever been in, the complex, if the public comes in, they do their business within that vessel. So we do have public that moves in and out of that building. So it would be when you come in the front door to the right, so you can come in and see that. Like I should, I didn't think to take a picture of it.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's logical, that makes sense in that way. And also, what's the problem with doing the same thing in the two locations when we do that? The plaques in both locations.
We, we can certainly take a look at that. Simply for this one, it felt like it was more appropriate in the interior, that was my feeling.
Right. And the reason I'm saying this too is that part of what we're wanting to do, but we're also building the movement for heritage tourism.
Right.
And in that particular part of our city, uh, that was a hub of civil rights activity and movement. And there could be, I mean, you have the Alexander Evans Complex, you have Buckler and House, you got the, the Booker T. Washington School, and the Gem of Martin Luther King spoke, you got the park and that arena. And when people are coming through, they come through and they read, they stop, they look. And so we might wanna consider if, and that other complex, on the Albemarle Street side, as Councilman Knight just said, is that how do we bring, is that I appreciate everything you've done, but how do we also bring more information, just like you've done here, to the public and to the employees there as well? Because wherever else we named the building, it's just really been one place. We got our own train station, one city hall, you know.
So we haven't had to do with combo.
Right, I, I, I mean, it's, it's a good question. And we're actually working on another project where that may dovetail right in with that. So if you go, Ken, to the, the scene now. Well, Sam, this is, these are the mockups for the, uh, the actual municipal ID signs. And these are the same thing we're doing at Holly Street Park, City Lake, Lancaster Park. Four locations that are already on order. And we're hoping to get all of those in at the same time. But, so this is what the municipal ID standard, sign standard will go that we're moving for all city facilities. So moving down, um, so for the Albemarle Avenue Complex, we recommend placing it at this location at Spruce Street and where there's an existing sign already at Albemarle. Those two ground sites, two sided ground sites, you'll see them coming both directions. So Ken, if you'll pull back down a little bit. You remember on the wayfinding, uh, the wayfinding project, that we talked about pedestrian kiosks and a historic walk relative to that? We're actually working on content with that. There's a team together that's trying to work on the content for those signs, with text and photographs and those kind of things. The thing I've asked them to do is there's, I think there's five signs downtown that are already identified and in the budget. And then to go ahead and start working on the signs, the conceptual plan for the signs for the historic walk, identify those other locations. So MLK Park, Booker T. Theater, uh, Booker T. School, those multiple things that you just walked through. So we could add a pedestrian kiosk, it would be keeping with that walk, that whole thing, to add a section on that on the walking tour.
Right, and the trail comes right.
So the trail would come right through there, so down Atlantic Avenue, down Albemarle Avenue. There's a site on there with the, um, I'm forgetting the name of the house, is it, or, or something that, um, the community.
Put, oh, the Mitchell House.
Mitch, yeah, what'd you say?
Mitchell House.
The Mitchell House, yeah. The Mitchell House that Ms. Hunter was working on. So I think the way to address what you're talking about, rather than that plaque is typically for a building, if you build it there, is to do one of these kiosk panels there and replicate some of the same content and some, some other stuff that can come down there.
So if I'm envisioning what, what the council members, the council is asking is that at each location where we have this sign that's standing up, somebody that walks past it should be able to stop and understand who Alexander Evans is. And if you take the information on the plaque and put it in a sort of a kiosk form right there where people can read it, see their information, is that pretty much.
We're talking on the, um, I'm thinking, uh, like when you go through Battle Park, you know, there's some, um, you know, I don't know, monuments, what, I don't know what you call it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, Marcus, right, where you can read information. I just think that, you know, presents a more robust feel for our city. I think that's something which, Rocky Mountain has so much history from everybody's vantage point.
Right, so that's what that pedestrian kiosk are about. One, just orienting you, but also to convey, to tell the story. Um, and there's multiple stories. So there's five or six stories already being, trying to work on which sites, working on specifically which ones we want. Identify where they need to go and start working on content. So it's a combination staff group and citizens group that were just getting the ball rolling on that. So my, my suggestion is we have this ready to roll, where we can get this done for Public Works Week. And that maybe we roll that into the pedestrian kiosk, although we know to come back and do that sign way ahead of time. Just, just to keep the timeline going to get this done. Cause we were hoping to put these signs in and the plaque out to be the dedication for Public Works Week for Ms. Perkins. Right, that was the suggestion.
Now, I think about the sign, now this bronze sign, it, it can be either interior, exterior.
It could, it's a question of word amount. And we have a standard produced for this historic walk and stuff, for those same signs that would be, so this would be consistent with all the stuff we did in the wayfinding for the entire trail.
Put the, sort of bronze sign.
Okay, so, so I haven't really seen what that exactly looks like. So perhaps the thing to do would be to bring that piece of, and make sure that we have consensus on that. I have seen what the sign looks like. And to your point, if it's okay with the council to move forward to get what we already have, the ability to do right down in time for Public Works Week, and then maybe come back and rededicate, dedicate.
So can I ask, now ask, what is the rationale behind putting it up now, waiting two months? I mean, should we just wait till?
I, I mean, the, the historic walk stuff for all the rest of those signs is gonna be a much longer timeline. And, um, and I think in order to make it all work together from the trail standpoint, we should kinda maybe look, look at it, where all the signs are gonna go. And so it works as a system for the walk, for that, and where we put it and what kind of content. So it, it has to look in the field of the other kiosk signs that we're working on.
Well, see, that's, that's the issue that I have, right?
Right.
Because I, we haven't seen what that looks like.
Right, and we're not ready with that.
Yeah, and we don't want to, um, there's a lot of good information on, on that plaque. And so, um, to be quite honest, I think maybe the thing to do is to just erect what we can, the two whole sign, and then come back. But we certainly don't want to be limited. And I understand the, the need to be consistent so that it looks like a system of signage, but at the same time, we don't wanna be limited. Because what has to be said about this may not be needed for some of these other areas and vice versa.
Yeah, I wasn't just, I mean, suggest that. I'm talking about the look and the feel of the signs and the graphics and those kind of things, and not, not what's on it.
Doing it two different times gives you two different opportunities, get a lot of publicity around it, I mean.
So are we, when we put the sign up, are we gonna do something when the sign goes up? Or are we just saying, you know, put it up and leave it up, and then two months later, we're gonna celebrate?
Well, because it's gonna be longer than two months, I think. You can make the dedication now for, uh, both the signs, um, on the street as well as the plaque within Environmental Services Building. And then, to your point, when all of these other, uh, kiosks are ready, then dedicate them all at one time.
Or, or you may do those kiosks in pieces, so we could potentially do that based, but we would come to you with that.
See, this be coming back to, to man, she'll bring it back.
Well, my, my, one of my business ventures was signs, and signs take a long time to produce. So, you know, if, if this is gonna be dedicated, what I read is May, Pope Works is May what?
Uh, May.
May seventeen through twenty-third. And I'm not sure how long it would take to get bronze, um, cast. Cast, because you've gotta cast that, and I would imagine it takes a long time to do that.
Well, the memo said that they wanted to put the signs up next, and they're dedicated in May.
Sixty days, it'll take, it'll take sixty days, it'll take sixty days from the time that you all agree on the verbiage and say it's okay that you approve the bronze plaque. And if we order it, it'll take sixty days for it to get back, for the.
So you think it's May eighth, or is it?
And that's, okay, the part I was just really the heartburn, which I shouldn't have, but, but I'm just saying I was concerned that you put something up and then you wait two months and it's dedicated or celebrated rather.
So you're saying do it all simultaneously?
At least, at least, yeah, at least we would do some case and then we would come back.
And I was just requesting that if, even if you haven't done, to try to schedule the installation closer to the time of dedication.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. The only one we have, we may have to move forward is the Holly Street Park, where we have some brown stuff.
And I was just talking about Alexander Evans.
We were trying to do them all as a group and one of them was actually.
I think we got.
You got the timeline?
Yeah, yes, sir. I think that what we're saying, what you're saying is to go forward with the installation of the sign and the plaque and then, and with the dedication, right, within, uh, that time period. And then come back to you with what the kiosk type signs are gonna be.
Then we understand you want the branding to be consistent and you wanna have a flow to it all, connectivity.
Bring that forward, and when we do that forward, we can talk about scheduling timelines for things and plans.
Just with the kiosks that you're talking about, I know it's not part of this, but being new, I may have heard it, but I don't recall it. You might just, at some point, just a brief paragraph or something, what the concept is.
Wayfinding, um, sign, yeah.
Just, I mean, I've seen some of the wayfinding for the Benson and stuff.
It's a part of the pedestrian trail, but yes, we've been.
I would appreciate that, just, I'm hearing what you're saying, but I'm, I can't tell you the whole concept.
You know, the summary, we, um, just budgeted in that the vision is.
Right, so we have a little bit of downtown stuff, so we're gonna budget. It's the next piece we're trying to plan for a little bit, so then we can budget and do the timeline.
Would that be CIP or is that too small for that?
It's a CIP.
It's CIP, because it tends to seem more.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna have closed session, Economic Development, Attorney Plan, Privilege. Is that, you ready? So we're gonna ask Stan.
So.
Let's put a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion made by, uh, Councilman Joyner, second by Councilman Dawtridge. All in favor, that be known by both of us, I, closed nation, we're in closed session. We ask our political, please.
For February ten, I'll ask the court to write a roll call. I'm sorry, let's do, um, let's do it quick, prayer. Uh, Councilman Walker, please, our special prayer.
Evening, thank you, ma'am. I saw the prayer. God, thank you for another day on earth, and we thank you for life, health, and strength. Now, God, as we prepare to conduct business, to the liking of the city, we ask that you, God, indeed, direct us. We ask that everything we do be pleasing and successful in your sight. And now I ask a special prayer now, God, for our city clerk and the situation she's dealing with now with her family. Continue to watch over her, continue to watch over our city, as we also had an incident today. Continue to keep us in here watching, look here, Jesus, have a prayer.
You feel our city clerk, write a roll call?
Councilman Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joiner.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Nowhere.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Mellon.
Here.
And now item number four is, uh, the approval of the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting in City Council held January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. The recommended action is to approve the minutes. Is there any need for discussion? Do we have a motion?
Certainly.
Councilman Dawtridge, seconded by Councilman, um, Joiner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Motion carries. And now we have item five, which is our community update, provided by our city manager, Rochelle Smallton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council, certainly, and again by saying that I appreciate all the great work of our City Council, the Assistant City Managers, Department Directors, employees, and staff. A mid-year review is now available on our website at RockyMountainC.gov. In it, you will find information and cornerstone achievements from each department over the first six months of this fiscal year. The City of Rocky Mountain Parks and Recreation invites you to attend a public meeting concerning proposed renovations at Battle Park. The meetings are February the twentieth and twenty-seventh, six o'clock to seven-thirty P.M., and March the second, from ten a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m. All meetings will be held in the theater lobby at the Imperial Center. For more information, please call two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-one-five-one. The City of Rocky Mountain's annual international festival of culture is hosted by the Martin Luther King Junior Commission, will be held in the Brown Auditorium on the campus of Nash Community College. The free event will take place Saturday, March second, from twelve o'clock P.M. until four o'clock P.M. And will showcase a variety of diverse communities that call Rocky Mountain home. If you would like to be a vendor and share your culture through food, music, fashion, and more, there is still space available. Please contact the Human Relations Department at two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-one-eight-one for more information. As I said before at previous council meetings, over the next several months, you will hear me talk a lot about the twenty-twenty census. Because the census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. Approximately sixteen million dollars of the city's budget is a result of our population numbers. So this is why our count needs to be accurate, and every individual residing in the city is counted. February the thirteenth at four o'clock P.M., there will be a neighborhood president's meeting in a committee room located here on the third floor of City Hall. The Census Representative Bernadette L. Richards, partnership specialist for the North Carolina U.S. Census, will provide complete count committee training for the neighborhood presidents and representatives and other community and church representatives. We encourage you to ensure that your household, your neighbor's household, and your community are counted in the twenty-twenty census. Your confidential data can be submitted online at twenty-twentycensus.gov. The next update is one that I personally had opportunity to participate on Friday evening. So I would encourage everyone to go out to the Blacklight Project that is now on display at the Imperial Center. The project features fourteen area blackmails in picture and narrative form. The idea of the project is to present blackmails in a positive manner while shifting the narratives that are often shared through media outlets. The project will also be displayed throughout the city beginning in April via a grant from the Z. Smith Reynolds Foundation. It really is an exceptional exhibit, and I hope that everyone will take the time to go out and see it. A statewide proclamation recognizing the centennial celebration of the Negro National League Week will be held at noon on February the thirteenth at the Imperial Center near the Buck Leonard Exhibition. And then finally, the Human Relations Commission meeting will take place this Wednesday, February the twelfth, four o'clock P.M. in the Conference Room One located on the second floor of City Hall. For a complete list of upcoming meetings, dates, and locations, please visit our website at RockyMountainC.gov.
Thank you, Ms. Smallton. At this time, we'd like to recognize the citizens of the Academy graduates. If somebody from staff can give us a little script or the program, and perhaps introduce some of our esteemed graduates.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. And maybe Lord rest these one of us. I am Loretta Braswell, and I'm coordinating Rocky Mountain for forty-plus years. And I am so proud to say ten of those years I have been coordinating, one of the things I've done is coordinate the Citizens' Academy Program. And I'm, but let me tell you a little bit about the academy, and then I will introduce something about bragging. The academy is designed for citizens and employees to learn more about city buildings and to allow our citizens and employees to become great leaders. And we are so proud to have it, but it's recruitment time, which is why we're here now. Citizens Academy started, of course, in two thousand and ten, of which I was able to join with two other employees to get the program started. Since then, we've had ten citizens to go through the program and to serve, currently serving on boards and commissions. That's one. We've had fifteen of our employees to go through this program. We've had over three hundred people to go through Citizens' Academy, and we're so happy about that. So we're recruiting now, we started about two weeks ago taking applications, and we will go through February eighteen, taking applications. So we want everybody in here to write that date down or put it in on the pump. We also are so happy that we have some of our participants from our last class that will be downstairs. We have plenty of applications, and we certainly would like more people to serve on our boards and commissions. We'd like more people to learn about city government. When I went through it myself in two thousand and ten, I was in part. I was working in the Human Relations Department, but that was the department that I was in. I knew all of that we needed to know for Human Relations. I didn't know about finance, I didn't know about producing water at the water plant, which is awesome. Some of the things that our Parks and Recreation Department did, I learned and studied. So I encourage you, those folks to talk about the citizens that do this, the citizens that do that, you just go in. And you probably won't know if you don't go through Citizens' Academy. So I do encourage you to do that. I'm happy to have one of our participants who wants to speak about the academy. She talked about it all. And she was saying that every citizen in this city needs to take the Citizens' Academy. And we can take it, got plenty of room. So I'm asking Tanya Parker to come up for a few minutes, and then I'll introduce the rest of our participants.
Again, my name is Tanya Parker. I live at Ward One. I've been here all my life, and I am passionate, I love my city of Rocky Mountain. And I was definitely all when I went to the class on last year. Being a person that was raised in Rocky Mountain, I didn't know half of the history of Rocky Mountain, just all the different departments. And it was taken in a time where I simply was taught about so much negatively. And I'm grateful that I had the opportunity to go get the information firsthand in all the different departments. And so I'm super grateful, and I compel everyone that has not to go through it. Again, it's March fifth through May seventh, it's only one night a week, from six to nine, it's from five-thirty to six. And so I promise y'all, if you just moved into Rocky Mountain, or you have been a resident of Rocky Mountain all your life, I promise you, before you post anything on Facebook, or talk about anything that you've seen in the media, or anything, I promise you should go through this class first and learn about everything that's done. And I think you will have an open eye of a lot of things that we have seen that may not be true. So I thank you again for the opportunity to be able to speak highly of the citizens of Rocky Mountain, Loretta and Loretta and her amazing opportunities to speak on behalf of our citizens. Thank you.
This is available for councilperson. We start out talking about the history of Rocky Mountain. And most of us don't know our history. So I certainly do encourage you to come aboard and join us. We've worked with citizens from sixteen to eighty-three, wonderful ages. Those young folks, they did some reports in school about the city, and I look. So again, I'm encouraging you to be part of the Citizens' Academy. And if you will just excuse us now, I apologize, we are going downstairs with the applications and wait on you all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, this really isn't the last thing. And the citizens that have been through the academy, we had twenty folks last time, several of them could not come for various reasons. But if you all would just stand up and introduce. We have two city employees.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Joe Bell. Like Loretta said, I have to work for the city of Rocky Mountain, the Community Resources Department. And their class was an awesome class. Like she said, all I knew about community resources, I got an opportunity to learn about all the different departments in Rocky Mountain in this very morning.
Everyone, my name is Patrice Hale. I also work for the city as the Community Development Plan Specialist for the Community Development Department. As we said, I've known about Rocky Mountain all my life, but until I went through the program, I was able to see five million of them.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Arthur Green. As a child, we were, we were a police department. And I'd like to say that's the program that really made my heart to beat, because we always stay in, I can complain about a lot of things, but until you get, can't actually see some things, you know, that's when you get to learn about the city. So this citizens' academy has been a great help for contact, more than contact, you know, things, and just a lot of areas. And letting a lot of not try to talk, you know, we should talk, you know, just a lot of different things, and so he was great. I enjoy everything that.
I'm Adele Green. I am from here in Rocky Mountain now, from Time Talk. And you're well put in here in Rocky Mountain, so I'm a very conscientious person, wanting to know everything. So you all wrote me and said, make sure Miss Green joined the academy. Well, guess what? I joined the academy, and I have enjoyed myself. I know a lot that I did not know. I said, you might have asked me some questions then.
I am Cassandra Green, daughter of Adele Green. They pretty much summed it up. I was, I was administrative for Work Time Life Church, and I have thoroughly enjoyed this academy. I was adopted at first, didn't know what to expect, but mom put me on the end, and I was, I was grateful for that, because I learned a lot about the city of Rocky Mountain.
I'm James Gerald. I've been in Rocky Mountain for about twenty years. And I've greatly enjoyed the Citizens' Academy, because there's so much to learn. You may think you know it all, but there is always something that you can learn, and I'm always interested in learning something new.
Well, I want to thank you for your time, your commitment to going through this process, and thank you for sharing with us.
Give us a hand.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, we're the petitions received from the public portion of our meeting. This is where the petition's from the public of our city council meeting. If you would like to address the council, you'll need to sign up. And if you did not get a form to sign up, please raise your hand, and someone will bring the form to you. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. This is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer the matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. We ask that you speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you will be asked to sit down or removed from the meeting. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and you will have three minutes. If your comments are in regard to an item that is subject of a public hearing, please wait until then, when that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. So I would like to ask Dr. Kim Akut, if you'd come up and state your address, your name for the record, and we'll hear from you.
Dr. Kim Akut, two-two-zero South Angleton Drive, Rocky Mountain. Last year, we had a heartbeat contested municipal elections. Citizens of Rocky Mountain were interested in hearing the positions of candidates running either for mayor or ward representation. I belong to the Rocky Mountain Vision Justice Group. I was a member of the coalition that organized the public forum called Put the Candidates. It took place at Ashcombe County Community College last September. If you recall, the auditorium was overflowed. We wanted to hear the positions on various problems of concern to our communities to all the new candidates who were running. In particular, I was struck by the statement made by the minority candidates that crime in this city was most concerned. Possibly even the number one problem to be tackled. Since all of us are not privy to the statistics staff of the police department, some of us, as members of different labor groups, came together to investigate with the police if this was the case. A preliminary conversation with two detectives, a lieutenant and a community service director, seemed to indicate that crime is actually on a downward trend. Just so that everyone can benefit from the information, I'm petitioning that the chief of police be able to speak on this issue, perhaps at our next council meeting. I'm interested especially in the trend in the last ten, twenty years, breaking down the various categories of crime like homicide, burglary, arson, drug trafficking, vehicular mishaps, et cetera. This should include the ages of those arrested for particular categories, and also by the areas of the city where they are faster, and whether misdemeanors follow the same pattern. My intent is for us to understand based on facts and not by innuendos or inferences that our city is crime-infested. This tends to instill unsubstantiated fear of certain areas in this city and diminish their value. The facts will also allow council and neighborhoods to take steps to remedy this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Akut. And next, I'll ask Mr. Carmelo Stancy. If you please come forward, state your address.
Good evening. I'm Carmelo Stancy, the second vice president, second vice president of the Rocky Mountain N.C.A.C.P. My address is one-two-seven Midway Lane, Talbert, and my Bella address is P.O. Box one-three-nine-one, Time Talk Two, three miles up Time Talk, seven miles up Talbert. I was appointed to the Human Relations Commission, and I didn't appoint myself. So when the issue is resolved, I will be replaced. To address the person who have attacked me from this podium, my track record of my effectiveness on the N.R.C. has been awesome. I'm asking you to come to give an update on the removal of the Confederate monument at Falls Road ASAP, because I put in some time with the relations meeting about the issue. In my closing, in saying that there are more pressing issues like the audit and other that she should have been more concerned about. I represent families in Rocky Mountain, friends of Rocky Mountain, and people in it, because they benefit also. I have been very effective in the minutes of the meeting, all of you are seeing in the video. I have been very effective in the minutes of meeting all these teenagers in the video dump lab. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stancy. I'd like to ask Mr. Johnny Cunningham to come forward.
Johnny Cunningham, five forty six Maryville Street. I was just here to even citizen council. I want to set the record straight. And to describe me as argumentative and confrontational, there's two kinds of words. Now, I've been here thirty years. I would like to define myself as this, since it's important. When you ride through my community and then you understand why I'm being targeted, to be bad here. And if I see, I'm gonna stand behind you. I'm gonna repeat it. If I'm wrong, I'm standing here and apologizing. And if I'm correct, then I hope you're gonna like it all. The issue in my community is that crime. Most of you don't know what crime was in my community. When we had truck drivers and white business people driving in our community buying drugs and prostitution, that was crime in it. But that's been years ago. And that's been cleaned up. And it was cleaned up by the citizens because we saw value in our community, along with the Rocky Mountain community partner. I think rumors on board, on there on board at that time. We clean up the crime and the drugs and prostitution and all the other illicit activities that went on in our community. Today, it don't exist. There is no crime wave. Now, we have an issue called control. In my community today, I'll give a personal example. There's a bachelor center that's governed by a board of white people, the whole board. That bachelor center was giving one point five million dollars. It was giving three hundred thousand dollars to have a chaplain and a nurse. Those programs don't exist. It's the tragedy of the matter is this, in our community, we are more than capable of performing the work, doing the work and maintaining and sustaining our community. This is obvious. Me being confrontational and argumentative, number one, whoever's saying this, think back, I never called you. I never came to your community. You came to my community. And you wanted to control, you wanted to drive the bus. We were driving the bus. And then...
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Samuel Bell.
We're in about two sixteen Old Street, Rocky Mountain. Kind of upset today because I have a friend, a young man that basically I took care of. He was shot at a drive-by shooting day. Family's at Granger, I don't know if that was likely, fifty percent. Go either way. It's like the third drive-by in three weeks. We don't know what's going on in this city. His uncle was murdered about ten, thirteen years, maybe fifteen years ago, Xavier Johnson on Caroline Avenue, murder assault. His nephew was murdered last year. His cousin, murder assault. This family was taking a tragic hit. You know, a couple of years ago, I asked why we gotta, why should we get more? And we had Marty McCord first thing in the morning, skipped off past him. Marty McCord was born and raised out of Rocky Mountain, Little Rock. Why we just in? I feel like we had Marty McCord with all this stuff on him going on. He's strong. He know what, he know what to say, he know what to do. You know, I was reading some paperwork that the city have put in, their rules, regulations that y'all have, y'all have the order to have good conduct in the city. Y'all have the right to put that in the city. Gunpowder, firearm and everything. Y'all have the power to push that issue, this crime. And y'all have done nothing. These families are moving down here to kill. Martell Dixon was gunned down, shot four years ago, titanium and everything. They just got this shooting three weeks ago. He told the police, just that, told the police that I wouldn't mind doing nothing. These are the type of kids y'all deal with. They ain't playing no games. They ain't even messaging the same ones. Boy, you shouldn't be around here. It sounded like they been shooting some, some military stuff. And it was, there was people in their apartment on Landon Avenue. It's two blocks away from Dixon. You got kids doing A, basketball, and this stuff happening. You got a lot of kids. I can't tell when y'all gonna protect these kids. When y'all gonna bring a hammer down?
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Kayah Darden.
My name is Kayah Darden. I reside at sixteen hundred Roanoke Street, Rocky Mountain. Each one counting one. Greetings to the city manager, mayor, city councilman, and citizens of Rocky Mountain. I will be using my three minutes to bring a lot of clarity to some very disturbing things that are going on in our city as well as in the media. I will assume that all of us are well aware of the undercover racist group on Facebook portraying to be concerned citizens of Rocky Mountain. Considering the fact that I am a millennial, I spend a lot of time on my social media platforms. I have taken the time to read the comments of concerned citizens and I have become sick to see such disrespect towards our black city leaders. There is an underlying widening divide between different races, which in my opinion has grown significantly since our president was elected. Not only in our city, but all over this country. If we continue to sit and act as though there isn't, our city will result in resegregation, which I am very afraid of. Our ancestors endured so much so that black people could one day become successful and have the opportunity to sit in a new position. I read the article about Blanchett Bistro's new development, possibly bringing controversy to the new Main Street reality. First, I want to agree with one of the comments that were made. Pro-black is not anti-white.
Come on then.
Black business districts exist all over this country. Also, I know you all have heard of Chinatown. I've never read an article about Chinatown causing controversy to nearby business developers. All type of ethnicities are welcome to Chinatown and there's no sign saying who is and who is not welcome. So with that being said, please lay off of the foolishness and learn how to celebrate one another. Downtown is developing and I can actually say that I am pleased to be a part of Rocky Mountain to see the great things that are in store for all people. In closing, I do want to say, for those of you who call yourselves advocates for young people, you must first set the example as a leader in order for young people to want to follow you. As a strong youth advocate, I will tell you that confusion, wrongfully criticizing and teaching us to disrespect people who you may not agree with, we will not listen nor work with you. As my leader teaches me, respect those of authority, no matter how you feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Ree.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and friends. My name is Malcolm O'Ree. I live at seventeen thirteen Bethrow, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. And I stand before you because I am still concerned about the future of our children of Rocky Mountain and the school system with which they do attend. I thank the mayor for calling and having a conversation with me and identifying a potential two players in the game. However, when I go through the community and I talk with people about the issue, there's so much about clarity. So I'm asking this city council to please help us get some accountability and some transparency regarding the future of our children. The children of Rocky Mountain do not need to be divided into Nash and Edgcombe. If that is a mandate from God, please let us know. Otherwise, please let us be vigilant and get to the root of what's going on. Historically, schools have gone through a lot of transition. We go from the Little T Washington High School, you know, that was originally in the black neighborhood and the history of how those children endured, you know, immigration and going to the Nash County School, I guess, and you Rocky Mountain High School when my husband graduated. And now they're gonna have some type of dissolution. Is that a great word? For any of you, we want some transparency and accountability before anything happens to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Minjes, Marty Minjes.
My name is Lauren Minges, twenty-two twenty North West Leon Boulevard, Rocky Mountain. I'm only speaking for myself. First of all, has anybody looked at this little welcome thing and that little triangle? What kind of face is in there? That looks like a school or a devil or something. I don't think that looks like a little welcome thing. I mean, why is that a devil? Anyhow, I came up with an idea. When I read in the paper that we need a couple of million dollars or something, I may not be much think that's my whole lot. To me, it's a whole lot. For potholes and corner roads and stuff, I got an idea. Since, something I read in the paper about, because we're still in the audit from the state, which I don't know why they're so slow about doing stuff, but since they're not ready to let us go ahead with the hotel or the parking garage, can we use some of that money that we were planning, the city was planning on using for that kind of development to use to the fill up the potholes and straighten out the streets? But probably it's gonna take a while when we get off the blacklist or whatever, that they're not gonna give us any money for doing something with the... Because the old town city council last year, or year before, whatever we're talking about, oh, they forgot that they needed some more parking spaces around the event center where they wanted to build it. It is built, there's no parking space for hardly anybody, but they said they could bus, let people park somewhere else and bus them in. That doesn't sound like that would cost a whole lot of money, especially considering how much the parking garage is gonna cost. And I'm glad to see that the city council is really listening to somebody, especially the citizens' academy. There were a bunch of y'all even smiling, which I thought was just very refreshing. I know you're not gonna smile at me, but that's okay. Also, you know, there are area watches in neighborhoods, you know, keep checking on your neighbors and if there's some, you're the person walking around and talking about. Can't you get a litter watch so that neighborhoods can kind of come together and catch these bums that keep going crack, I mean, uh, litter out on the street? Because I don't live in the neighborhood, but I will patrol my media in front of my shop on three oh one. And I don't know why, maybe with people can't do that. And the one, next to the last, please just leave that in.
Thank you, Ms. Minjes. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, brings us to item eight, which is the consent agenda. One thing I do need to announce is that we have eliminated item fifteen from the agenda. That's really more for information. If you have any interest in serving on board City of Rocky Mountain, if you would let the court or someone know, then we can address that. Item eight is our consent agenda. A for consideration of adoption of the following fiscal year, 2019, 2020 ordinance amendments. The budget ordinance, number one, the electric fund appropriates funds for reimbursement of expenses for mutual aid provided to Elizabeth City in the fall of 2019 relative to Hurricane Dorian. Increases the overtime budget for the current year and offsets mutual aid costs of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Item two is the trust and team fund appropriates revenue not derived from city taxes and fees, in other words, vending machines and special programs, two hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Item three, grant project ordinance appropriates additional grant funds from the assistance for firefighters, grants to the public safety grants fund, fifteen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Item B, consideration of temporary street closing request from Ann to Craig Station Square to close Nash Street, that's the block between church and Main Street, from twelve PM to eleven PM on Saturday, April eighteenth, 2020, for the Station Square Spring Affair Event, the rain date of May sixteenth, 2020. Recommended action is to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Knight, seconded by Councilperson Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, relax, sign. Motion carries. Item nine is a public hearing, so we'll now have a public hearing. An explanation of feasibility study relative to annexation, number three fifteen of twenty-fourteen Old Mill Road.
The, yes, the petition certainly meets the standards for annexation. We can go into further detail, but everything is in good order.
So as I said, is there any other member from the public who would like to speak to this particular petition? Okay, being none, is there a motion?
So move.
Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Blackwell, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, carries. Item ten is consideration of ordinance amending chapter ten, Article Three, Division Three of the city code as follows. Section ten ninety-one removes the following text in subparagraph four, intended to be occupied for human habitation, whether temporarily or permanently, and section ten ninety-two replaces the director of public works with director of development services. I think some background may be appropriate on that as well.
Sure, I think Will will come forward, but as he is coming forward, this is the response to our bill now to remove public nuisance from commercial buildings as opposed to now just focusing on residential.
Yeah, Mayor, council, nothing much to add to that, just a point of clarification.
Thank you.
Yeah, just consistency with the department, merging those departments and again, allowing us to move forward with that on their special side.
Okay, is there a need for discussion?
Who?
Yes, sir.
Just a question. Mr. Green, if you would clarify, basically, it's just any structure within the city of Rocky Mountain is applicable to this, is that correct?
Any structure, yes, because what we had previously, it was specifically for residential only, but this is gonna take that middle section out. And then also, point of clarity to get public works off of that is now director of development services, our side.
Any additional questions? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Motion by Councilman Joyner to adopt, seconded by Councilmember Daltridge. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 11 is the consideration of the following recommendations from the traffic engineer is to adopt A, no parking anytime on both sides of Roundtree Drive from Gold Rock Road westward to Hornbeam Drive, and B, no parking anytime on both sides of Roundtree Drive from Brentwood Drive eastward for 330 feet. Is there a need for any clarification or discussion?
A move approval.
A Councilmember, Miller.
Second.
Makes a motion for approval, seconded by Blackwell, working hard today. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
And for the record, I'm assured that that may some curb to curb on Roundtree, and that includes no parking in the median, which has been a real issue on there.
Okay, motion carries. Item 12 is consideration of municipal agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for reimbursement from the North Carolina DOT relative to curb and gutter replacement at the intersection of Falls Road and Church Street. The city is to be reimbursed up to $25,000. Is there a need for any discussion or clarification on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is that the correct address, by any chance, Falls Road and Church Street?
Intersection of Falls Road and Church Street is the city manager, perhaps the front, better place.
It's trying to figure out where they, don't understand where they are.
Yeah, Brad, if you would clarify.
Oh, I got you. I got all the way through to the end. I'm sorry. Right. I almost thought it ended right at, um, Gray Street. Goes all the way through to the end. I get it.
Got you.
And I'll say, approve the motion.
Okay, hey, Councilman Blackwell, approve the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 13 is consideration of bid for purchase of police vehicles via the North Carolina Sheriff's Association Group. Purchasing program bid number 19-05-0911 are as follows. A for 2020 Chevrolet Taboo's Taboo's 1500 Appalachia Vehicles ordered to park Chevrolet Inc. at a cost of $32,435 per vehicle for a total cost of $129,740. And B, eight Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive Longleaf Pine Vehicles awarded Performance Ford Inc. at a per vehicle cost of $34,349.90 for a total cost of $274,799.20. Is there, are there any questions? Need for discussion? Motion moved by Councilman Joyner to accept the motion as recommended.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Miller. All in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, item 14 is consideration of rescheduling or canceling the March 9th, 2020 Committee of the Hall of Regular Scheduled City Council Meeting as a complex with the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference.
Move.
It's moved by Councilman Knight.
Second.
Since, excuse me, since it says, canceling, we don't choose between those, and it is canceling, right?
Councilman Knight, you made the motion. Is that to cancel the meeting? Okay, Councilman Knight has a motion on the floor to cancel the meeting for March 9th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Joyner. All in favor, say aye.
Walker.
I'm sorry, Walker, I'm sorry. All in favor, by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. It carries. Item 15, as we noted before, has been removed. Is there any need for new business? All right, with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
It's moved by wherever, Councilman Joyner, seconded by Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting is closed. Thank you.